Calling the meeting to order for the June 13, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Any questions on consent calendar from the dais? All right, moving on to item two, have a proclamation for National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Is the representative present? Would you like to please let us identify yourself in your organization?
Hello, I'm Ann Gray. I'm with the Alzheimer's Association. And do I have the opportunity to make some remarks?
You sure do.
Oh, great, great. Well, I just want to thank you mayor and the city council and staff for this proclamation. We at the Alzheimer's Association are very grateful for this recognition. And around the country, June is being recognized as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, also known as ABAM. And this is how the Alzheimer's Association utilizes ABAM to encourage people to get involved in spreading awareness about Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. Your actions today are a very important step in towards this mission, and we want to spread the idea that everyone can be an advocate regardless of their situation, because everybody with a brain is at risk for Alzheimer's disease. Unfortunately, too many families have been impacted by this disease in the United States. Over 5 million people are living with the disease, and ABAM gives individuals and families a space to tell their stories in order to empower them and others into action. And on June 21st, people will have the opportunity to act by participating in the longest day. The longest day raises awareness and funds to combat Alzheimer's disease. And for individuals and caregivers with Alzheimer's, every day is the longest day. If you'd like to learn more about ABAM, the longest day, or other ways to join our movement, you can visit ALZ.org. And on behalf of Alzheimer's Association, I would like to reiterate our sincere thanks to the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Please stay standing while I read the proclamation, then we'll take a photograph. Whereas today, there are more than 5 million Americans living with Alzheimer's, a figure that is expected to grow to as many as 16 million by mid-century if a cure or an effective treatment is not developed. And whereas there are currently more than 630,000 people with Alzheimer's living in the state of California, over 50,000 of whom are in Orange County, additionally, another 16,000 caregivers in Orange County who are caring for loved ones with Alzheimer's. And whereas researchers are making great progress in developing ways to accurately diagnose and treat Alzheimer's disease, and we need to accelerate the pace of that research for going to have a disease-altering treatment in the next 15 years. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is making June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and July 21 is the longest day, and asking residents of Orange County to visit ALZ.org to learn more about Alzheimer's and compadre the effort to combat this disease. Now, I therefore, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, proclaim June as National Alzheimer's Day and Brain Awareness Month, and June 21st, 2017, as the longest day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Laura Detweiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. With me is Recreation Supervisor Brayson Alexander, who will be making introductions this evening of our Mayor's Youth Council.
So I just want to say thanks to the council for having us. I'm not going to go into too much about the Mayor's Youth Council, because I'm going to let our participants kind of speak to the program. They got a short presentation, but it is, we have roughly 52 participants, and it's basically teens in the community that are looking for experience with local government. So with that said, I'm actually going to have all three of them come up, and it's Sidney Little, Katie Hendricks, and Ashlyn Johnson, which guys will come up.
Hi, I'm Katie Hendricks. I was the, what was I, the president of Mayor's Youth Council.
Hi, I was Sidney Little. I was the secretary of Mayor's Youth Council this year.
Hi, I'm Ashlyn Johnson, just a member.
Mayor's Youth Council is an opportunity for young adults from all over Newport to come together to learn about the community, government, and how it works, while having the opportunity to give back to the community.
So we have three areas of focus. First off, we have government involvement, where we learn about local government and the issues currently plaguing our city. Second, we have Youth Government Day, which is where we shadow a lot of the members of the local government, and we have hands-on real experience, which I think is really valuable. And third, we have community service. So we'll talk more about that later in the presentation, but we have a lot of opportunities for community service in Mayor's Youth Council.
So the members of Mayor's Youth Council, we've attended city council and community meetings such as Speak Up Newport, Women in Newport Networking, and other events. And in our meetings, we debate and discuss current local issues, specifically curfew, legalization of marijuana, and parking at Coronel Mart High School.
All my favorite issues.
One of our biggest events is Youth and Government Day. This day, I'm sure a lot of you guys have participated in. It's where we have the opportunity to shadow a city council member or a staff of the city of Newport Beach, and we end the day with a mock city council meeting, which is a really great opportunity to just see how our city works and see how these council meetings work.
So for community service, we have a lot of different opportunities. We have beach cleanups and tutoring and stuff like that. We also volunteered with Project Hope Alliance, in which we had Easter baskets, which we filled with toys and unperishable goods to give to underprivileged children in our community. I'm happy to say that we more than doubled our goal of community service hours. We got 1,100, and our goal was only 500, so we're very happy about that.
Oh, these pictures are the Easter baskets we filled for Project Hope Alliance at our last meeting. On behalf of all of Mayor's Youth Council, I would like to thank the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board members, Karen Yelsey and Charlene Metoyer, city council member Diane Dixon, all of the staff of Newport Beach, and SOS. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, thank you so much for your volunteerism and your activity in the community. Do any of you now have the bug to run for office and be on this dais one day? Or is it true you do it all? No? Yes, Ms. Johnson, you're shaking your head, yes? All right. Great, thank you for coming. Thank you. Thank you, staff. This time, we have a presentation from the Sister Cities Program.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. I'm Tim Heatherton from the library, and I'm providing their annual update as two members of the Sister Cities Association, Connie Skiba and, excuse me, Lyddie Paulson. And here they are.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, and members of the city council. We are here to do a presentation to explain to the city council what part we play in the city and how you can get involved, too. I have put on your, I have handed out a folder that gives you much more detailed information about our organization.
Would you please share your name with us?
My name is Lyddie Paulson, and I'm president of the Newport Beach Sister City. And this is Connie Skiba. She's our vice president in charge of Okasaki.
Thank you.
The Newport Beach Sister City Association is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization founded in 1984 by local residents. NBSCA operates under the umbrella of the Cultural Arts Division of the city of Newport Beach. Various Newport Beach members over the years have signed mutual agreements in form of a proclamation declaring that Okasaki, Japan, Antibes, Cabo San Lucas, and Ensenada, Mexico are our sister cities. We are governed by a board of directors of 15 to 21 members and are advised by a city liaison, as well as one from the Newport Mesa Unified School District, and one to two high school student representatives. We're governed by a set of city policies, as well as our own written bylaws, policies, and procedures. We are members of the Sister City International headquartered in Washington, DC, and the U.S.-Mexico Sister City Organization, who provide invaluable support and information. NBSCA's operational funds come from grants given by the city of Newport Beach, membership dues, donations, fundraisers, and grants from local companies and businesses when available. What do we do? Our goals are to strengthen partnerships between the city of Newport Beach and its sister cities, to increase awareness and participation at the municipal level, to promote cultural understanding, to motivate and empower private citizens, city officials, and business leaders to conduct long-term programs of mutual interests with our sister cities. To that end, NBSCA members organize a reciprocal student exchange between youth from Newport and our sister cities. And Connie Skiba is going to give you a brief report on what's happening this summer.
Newport Beach and Okasaki, Japan have had a continuous exchange program for over 30 years. The first exchange program began in 1987 by a local businessman and rotarian, Mr. Wendell Fish. This June 27th, six students and two teachers will be our ambassadors to Okasaki, representing our city and our schools. They will live with a host family, attend a Japanese school with their reciprocal students, and participate in Japanese family activities, as well as attend events and meet with Okasaki city officials. The host student will in turn come to Newport Beach for the same kind of experience late this September. A highlight when they come to Newport Beach is always the famous pumpkin carving party held in the park on Private Road. The event is hosted by the Newport Balboa Rotary Club, our partner in this venture. Newport Beach firemen give, volunteer their time and bring their equipment and cook the hamburgers. Various city and school district officials can be seen among the crowd. The Okasaki Exchange Program provides an amazing, hands-on educational opportunity for our student ambassadors and their families. These are global friendships that develop and last over the years of our young people, our young youth. A special friendship between our two cities can be seen by the two friendship statues. One is in front of the Central Library, and one is at the entrance of the Kreen Mariners' Library. The stone of these statues is from Okasaki, and the stone carver is from, was from Okasaki. Also, there are beautiful Japanese stone lanterns and pine trees located in the Irvine Terrace Park, where you will see Shogun Tokugawa. He is the most recent gift given to our city to celebrate our 30 years of friendship. These are cultural pieces of art that add to our city and represent the friendship that has developed since 1984 between Newport and Okasaki. The Newport Beach Sister City, we're only a vehicle into keeping this friendship alive, and we thank you, city council, for your support in supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you.
This year, NBSCA supported the annual Ensenada race by sending our VP, Baja Revs, Melanie and Victor Woodworth to Ensenada on the day of the race. Prior to the race, they attended the mayor's reception held in Newport. They met with, there they met with the new mayor of Ensenada, Marco Novello, and the director of international affairs, Jared Gutierrez. While in Ensenada, they had lunch with the Ensenada city officials, where they presented our gifts of fabric lunchboxes full of toys for the Day of the Child presentation, celebration. Among the various items in the bag, the Legos and the Barbies were the biggest hit. Sister City is hoping to host a high school teacher for Antibes late this summer, who will be working with Sherri Penny Myers, our vice president, Antibes, to rekindle our longtime high school student exchange. Thanks to Sherri, local artist Gian De Genvenire, I don't pronounce that right, a public artist painting in public places, has agreed to travel to our sister cities, Cabo, Antibes, and Okasaki, and paint the gardens in each city. Her first stop was Cabo and then on to Antibes. Gian has been suggested, selected by Antibes to be their artist in residence at the Villa Fontaine, where she will paint in the gardens. Her last stop is Okasaki. Gian has applied and received an invitation from the Newport Beach Arts Commission to exhibit her paintings of the gardens in our sister cities at the Newport Beach Central Library in the fall of 2018. NBSCA will be holding a reception in conjunction with the exhibition. Gian will be donating one of her paintings to us, and has granted permission to our organization to use a copy of a painting from each city for our promotional purposes. We've been chosen to host the quarterly meeting of the Southern California Chapter of Sister City International in August. It will be held at City Hall and in the park area, and this will be a great opportunity to promote our wonderful city. NBSCA also entertains groups of dignitaries from our sister cities and travels to their countries with citizens and dignitaries from Newport Beach, usually during our five-year anniversaries. Outside of these official exchanges, strong sister city relationships do not only serve as an engine for diplomacy and peace building, but also economic development and investment. Deep and enduring friendships built due to sister city partnerships open doors for business relations and increased tourism. Our challenges. Our challenges involve expanding our membership. There are so many wonderful organizations competing for membership in our area that it makes it difficult to find new members. We have lots of ideas for additional activities and fundraising, but it takes bodies to make it happen. To that end, we try to get as much press as possible for our events, and some of that's in your folder. Our fundraisers are also social events planned around an international theme, and we promote our organization at these events. Our other challenge is funding. NBSCA's budget per year is about $15,000, and that information's in your folder there, too. Our expenses include membership in Sister City International and U.S.-Mexico Sister City, liability and directors officers insurance, administrative expenses like maintaining a website, Facebook page, printing, costs to supplement the student exchanges, and costs for entertaining dignitaries from our sister cities, as well as sending, helping members go to the sister city conferences. In the past, the city of Newport Beach has been our main source of funds, contributed on average $10,000 per year to our budget. We also hold small, several small fundraisers, collect membership dues and donations. We receive a small grant from Pacific Life. Local businesses, such as the Marriott Hotel and Hornblower Yachts, have helped in the past with costs for dignitary visits, and others have provided auction items for our fundraisers. It's time to design a new and improved informational brochure that will help to promote our organization, and we need more funds to do it. Sister City International holds its annual conference each year at different locations around the US, and some have been held in international venues. Two years ago, the conference was held in San Jose, and since it was close by, two of our representatives attended at their own expense. It proved to be an invaluable experience and one we want to repeat. With additional funding, we'd be able to supplement the cost. When we had the funding, we helped send students to the youth conference held at the same time. At the conference, the youth connect with about 150 other students from around the world, attend workshops, share their cultures, and solve the world's problems. This last year, the conference was held in Washington, DC, where it celebrated the 60th anniversary of Sister City International. Our student representative was able to pay his own way. The conference starts off with a parade of flags of all the member cities and countries. The flag of Newport Beach flew proudly in our nation's capital. On behalf of the Newport Beach Sister City Association, I want to thank the city council for all your past support. Prior to the last few years, the city has provided up to $10,000 in funding, and this amount has allowed us to meet all of our goals. And it is our hope that you can find a way to restore our funding to its previous level. And I think that's it. And right now, I would like to introduce Steve Bender, president of Sunrise Rotary, and Steve recently visited Antibes, and would like to make a brief presentation of a gift from their deputy mayor to our mayor, Kevin Muldoon, and he has another thing, too, to do.
Hello, I think I know you all. Steve Bender, Newport Beach Sunrise Rotary. I was asked by our club to visit Antibes on my way home from a medical mission in India, so I had a chance to stop there for four days and met with the mayor, and he has a gift for you. Don't get excited, coffee mugs. But I also wanted to present you with a Paul Harris Fellowship Award. It's the highest level of Rotary award that we can give. I believe your grandfather has one. And this is to say thank you for all the work you've done to make Newport Beach more an inclusive city, between Special Olympics, Alzheimer's, and all the other work you've done. So I'd like to give that to you now.
Thank you, Steve. Yep. Mr. Bender, for this beautiful acknowledgement. I think you are a very valuable member of our community, and I know you're stepping down as your, as president of the chapter you head. So I was able to do a lot of this with your help, with your encouragement, so I thank you very much. And I'd like to point out, just I got these beautiful pens. I'm guessing these are from Antibes? And I think there was some confusion when I said that I wanted a pen, but I'll gladly take it. They are beautiful, and I hope I'll send a thank you note to them. Thank you so much.
They're very wonderful people, so beautiful.
That's great. Thank you for making that trip, and thank you all for their presentation. Yes, Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to add my support, appreciation, and encouragement to our Sister Cities organization, and thank you, Lyddie, and Connie, and Steve, for lending your good community volunteer hours to work on behalf of the city in these long years of these relationships. I, too, went to Antibes, I think it was two years ago, and they're so appreciative of the city of Newport Beach's support and the relationship. It's very special. And what I think what I said publicly when I returned from that trip was how much I appreciate what our own Sister Cities organization does on a shoestring, on a shoestring budget. And it's the blood, sweat, and tears of your members that host these students who come from afar, and other government officials who come from the cities in Japan, and Antibes, and Mexico, and it's, I just want you to know, I appreciate it. And I hope we could figure out a way to help you. I also would like to see the community help you do more, because you are doing so much for our community to strengthen those cultural bonds, and the student exchange is particularly valuable and wonderful for our students. So my thanks and appreciation for all the good work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Hurdman.
Lyddie, I want to thank you. I was the one, I was the council member that requested an update on Sister Cities organization. You did a fine job. One question, what are the annual dues? Too much reading material for five minutes.
They're not much. I think an individual's $20, a senior's $30, a family is $50. And then we put on there, we have several patron members who pay $100, too.
Thank you.
So we try to keep it low cost for the families and the...
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other comments from the dais on this item. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward. All right, seeing none. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss with legal counsel the items listed on the agenda under section 4A, including two matters of existing litigation entitled Susan Riddle versus City of Newport Beach, and City of Newport Beach versus Insurance Company of the State of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you. We are en reche's until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Apologies, closed session went a little over. Mr. Harper, are there any closed session reports?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There are no closed session reports this evening.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have the please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman O'Neil.
Please rise, place your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Invocation led by Councilman Scott Piattar.
Thank you. If you bow with me, God, thank you for the opportunity we have to come before you. God, your word tells us that we're supposed to pray for kings in authority, and those in authority, that we may lead quiet and peaceful lives. God, we ask that you would give this body wisdom in making their decisions tonight, that the city of Newport can lead quiet and godly lives. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As occurred to see, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. Now it's time for city council announcements. These are non-discussion items, and as well, new items council members would like to place on future agendas. Mr. O'Neil.
It's been a few weeks, so we have done lots, and I've seen many of you in lots of different places. So we'll start with Newport Harbor High School Memorial Day. They did a fantastic job yet again this year. The Chamber Athletic Awards Dinner, kudos to all of the students who were phenomenal athletes. I love seeing the number of schools that we're going to be sending folks out to. The Balboa Island Parade, this year I got to have my kids in their very first parade, which was phenomenal for them. We bought about six pounds of candy, split it between the two of them, and they just would reach down, throw to the side, reach down, throw to the side, and it was great. They really enjoyed themselves. The Crystal Cove Soiree kickoff was last week. Please mark your calendars, it'll be in the fall, and it's just a great cause. Had a great evening. Balboa Yacht Club Boat Festival, beautiful boats, great people, a little shenanigans on the winner, Mr. Avery, but congratulations nonetheless. And finally, I just wanted to say, thank George Murdock for providing an oil field tour, which was actually quite enlightening. I'd only ever really seen it as a balance item, so actually got to see where we pull the oil from the ground. Thank you.
For those of you who are scratching your heads, yes, Newport Beach has oil fields. Councilman Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the oil field tour was a really nice tour. I'd like to request for a future agenda to be placed on next meeting's agenda to talk about on-leash hours for dogs near the Santa Ana Jetty.
Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I have a few announcements. I want to thank Councilmember O'Neil for mentioning the Newport Harbor Memorial Service. We attended it, it was a very meaningful event, and the Athletic and Scholarship Award dinners for Newport Harbor. First thing I want to talk about is this is an exciting week. Watch the video. Watch the video. So that's our big announcement this week. We invite all of you to come to see the kickoff and ride the trolley on Saturday, this Saturday. And just a little bit of facts about the trolley. It starts service for this summer only, on the weekends only, beginning Saturday, June 17, just in time for summer. The free trolley will be available each Saturday and Sunday through September 3, Labor Day weekend. It will also be in service on the 4th of July. Here on this map, you see the various stops along the way, 18 stops up and down the peninsula. Hours of operation are 7:30 to 9:30, 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. Free par, it's free, and free parking at Hoag Hospital, at the Lower Hoag Hospital Lodge, just off PCH, by using the entrance off Coast Highway. And trolley riders can jump onboard at any time, and this is throughout the summer, on the weekends, on any of the 18 stops. So the whole point is to encourage people to park at Hoag, or if you even have guests, they don't, and they want to explore all the wonders of the peninsula, they could leave their car where it's parked and hop on the trolley and get on and off as many times as they want. There'll be four trolleys operating, and there should be a trolley at each stop every 15 minutes. And there's going to be an app, or there is an app, and that will tell you where, just like with Uber, where the trolley is as it is approaching the next stop. So please do come down and explore the Balboa Peninsula in style aboard the trolley and enjoy all the offerings at Lido Marina Village, Balboa Village, at Newport Pier area. Lots of things are happening on the peninsula. I will say also, I guess the next slide talks about, we do have a launch event on Friday, June 16, and there'll be four pop-up locations for the trolley with fun activities and giveaways, starting at 10 a.m. on Friday. The first trolley will arrive at Harborside Pavilion down at Balboa Village for a brief dedication ceremony. And there will be other events, 10:40 a.m. at Marina Park, at 11 a.m. at the Ben Carlson Memorial Statue at Newport Pier, and 11:40 at Lido Marina Village. So it's really going to be a fun time to celebrate our trolley and our, kudos to Judy Garland, one of my favorite movies. A couple other announcements, if I could just ask your forgiveness here for a few announcements. Two weeks ago, we had the Women in Government Luncheon, and I've talked about this once a year. It's a wonderful event where current and past former electeds and those who have served in any capacity in our civic leadership, on a council-appointed board or commission, as well as our senior women functional leaders on city staff. It's just a wonderful luncheon to recognize all the women in our community who have served in some volunteer capacity. And I appreciate Debbie Allen, who's the former chair of the Civil Service Board, for hosting in her home, and it is always a special event. Balboa Island Parade was fun. Just as Mr. O'Neil mentioned, it's always fun to ride a special car in the parade and the Wooden Boat Festival. And also tomorrow, Speak Up Newport, right across the way in the community room, our own Kimberly Brandt, our Community Development Director, will be giving an update on all the economic activity, new development activity on Balboa Peninsula. It's all going through various phases of completion, so it will be really great to see the fruits of that economic investment. So thank you, Mayor. Those were my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
As Councilman O'Neil said, it's been three weeks, and it's been a busy three weeks. With Mayor Muldoon being on vacation, I had the opportunity to represent him at a couple of functions. We have in this county an organization called the City Selection Committee, and it's made up of mayors throughout the, all the cities in Orange County. And they get together periodically, and their purpose is to select board members, committee members, and commissioners for the various boards, committees, and commissions throughout the county. I was, that day, I did put my application in to be elected to the Airport Land Use Commission, and I was elected to that position. I felt it was important that someone from Newport Beach be represented on this commission when it comes to airport issues and land use. So I'm not only a city council member, I'm now a commissioner. Want to congratulate Duffy on the Newport Underwater Cleanup Day. He was a very active sponsor of this event, and it was very, very successful. Balboa Island Parade has already been mentioned, but what hasn't been mentioned, Dave, is that our Public Works Department earned the theme award. And there's a couple of slides here showing you what their entry was in the parade. And they'll receive their award this Saturday at the annual BIIA Pancake Breakfast. Someone going to be there to accept the award?
Mark Vekoevich. And also, I want to just, Municipal Operations was also a key player in that operation, and they may be at the award, too.
Very good. I attended Anton Middle School Character Awards Assembly and represented my colleagues there. I also participated in the tour of the city oil fields. And once again, I represented our mayor at the Wooden Boat Festival, and I can assure you that there were six judges judging the competition that day, not just me, because Brad's boat won Best in Show. And they've been kidding me about some collusion going on here, but that simply was not the case. It's an absolutely beautiful boat. And then tomorrow, or Thursday morning, I'll be attending the Boys and Girls Leadership Awards Breakfast here in the city, representing my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Thank you. As long as I lived in this town, I'd never attended the Balboa Island Parade, and somehow it was off my radar for all this time. And my, when I ran for council, my now-wife, Julie, said to me, there's one thing I'm not going to do, I'm not going to be riding in any parades with you going down some main avenue somewhere. And so there's just a lot of things in our relationship, you know, never, you're never going to do, and you end up doing, that's certainly on my side of it. But there we were, on the back of Jim and Aaron Maloney's red 1965 Mustang, and it was fabulous. And they were just a great, great hosts of the parade. And I was staggered by the size of the parade and the whole thing, and I'm sure everybody's been on the parade in here, but I tend to shy away from those things. It was, I had a great time. What a, what a spirit of the town and that whole thing. It's just terrific, the people that were there, and all the effort and people, the cars. I was impressed, and I'm looking forward to coming back next year, and I think Julie is, too. I think. The Balboa Yacht Club did a fabulous job putting on the Wooden Boat Festival. And the neat thing about it, from my perspective, it was open to the public. And, you know, a lot of times yacht clubs are, most of the time, they're not open to the public. So it was great to see not only, you know, community members and yacht club members, but people from out of town that just came down to see the boats that normally, you know, clubs are private, so they opened the club up. And I thought that was really, a really nice thing for them to do. So it just was a really good event. I encourage anyone that has any interest in classic vessels, because the work that people put in is really something to, to go next year, and they just did a great job. They had 130 volunteers helping them put that, the show on. So, and Councilman Hurdman's now my partner in my boat, by the way.
I wish.
All right, Mayor Potem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know it's going to be a long night when every single councilperson speaks. So sorry, but I have to say that the celebration for Memorial Day at Harbor High School was quite something. My son had just gotten out of the Navy, and I dragged him there, and they put on quite something. It's 26 years they've been doing it. And what they do is they read aloud all the past students who lives were given in, to our nation, and it's quite gripping. And also, they also announced those who are, who have served. And then I have to say, the, the night before was the Newport Harbor High School Hall of Fame, which was started three years ago or so, and with the idea of honoring a few students who've done great things in their lives. And I have to, it is, it's phenomenal. I got to announce three winners this year. There are 10 students, five teachers, and you would, you just would be flabbergasted at the accomplishments of, of the former Harbor High students. It's been there a long time, you know, Frank Marshall, you know, E.T., things, little things like that. And it just goes on and on like that. You just can't believe it. But I got to announce my former track coach and biology teacher, Bob Haley. And if he had made a list in his life of all the people in the whole wide world that would be doing this, my name would be on the bottom of his shoe. But I, they gave me something to read, and I rewrote it, and I, I just, I winged it, and it was really special for me to do that. So that is a great tradition that they've got going. And if ever you're really bored, I guess, you could go into the, the high school there and look on the walls and read about these folks. It's, it's not boring. You'd be amazed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And speaking of winging it, Mayor Potem Duffield did a great job of being one of the speakers for the dedication of John Wayne Park. Councilman Hurdman, Councilman Piattar, and Councilwoman Dixon were in attendance, as I was as well. I've received a couple emails since, and I've heard as far as Malibu, that some people are talking about how great the park is. That's Pat Dixon who told me that story. So I think it's great that we have a place where people can come, remember the most famous resident in the history of Newport Beach, and admire the sunset, and admire his contribution to freedom throughout the globe. So that was a great event, and I'm very thankful to staff for making it smooth, beautiful, and, and, you know, really highly regarded, well-attended event. So thank you very much, staff. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, we had one extra announcement to pile on there. I'm going to ask Dave Webb to make that announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Exciting news tonight, I'd like to bring you in regard to your recent decision for the city, just very recently, to take over the mooring operations from the County of Orange, the Sheriff's Department, along with on-the-water operations. We've been working hard. Staff has taken that challenge. And tonight, I'd like to introduce the key member of our staff, our new harbor master, Dennis Durgan, is sitting in the audience with us tonight. A little bit about Dennis, I'm going to ask him to say hello to you. Dennis is a long-term Newport resident. I believe he came here as a six-year-old boy, moved into the community, currently resides in Bay Shores with his wife, Deborah, and his daughter, Kit, 21-years-old. But Dennis has a great sailing pass, and I can't even get into all the accomplishments. I looked at his sailing record, and it was, it was pages. But some of the accomplishments as a sailor and a captain, three American Cups, one of them was a victory with Dennis Connor on the Freedom. He's been in 16 transpacs, skippered the Admiral's Cup many times, the Lipters Cup, and various others to go with. So a lot of sailing experience on the water. He also has owned a marine supply business for a portion of his life, and currently works as an assistant to his wife in a realtor's business. Dennis' background, also his educational background, went to Orange Coast College. He's really a local boy, spent his life growing up in the harbor in the sailing programs there. Then went over to the University of Hawaii and spent some time in their sailing program, and ended up at the Naval Academy. So the list goes on and on. We're really happy to have Dennis with us tonight and to introduce him to you. And with that, I'd probably like, if Dennis, you'd like to step up the microphone and say anything to council, or introduce yourself?
Greetings, council. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you. At my new position, harbor master, we're trying to outline what all of our duties are exactly. So there's stuff on our list that I don't even know where it is yet. Bear with us, and, and, you know, the city staff has just been absolutely fantastic so far working with them, because this is kind of a fast-track operation. And we had some great service workers that were vetted by Human Resources, and I got to do, you know, the final interview. And so they're getting proofed out, and as soon as we get, get, you know, them onboard, which should be in the next week or so, then we can start doing some training and, and, you know, basically giving an update as the program progresses. So we're due to take over on July 1st. And looking forward, forward to that date. July 4th will be the busiest day on the harbor for the year. So we'll have all three days to prepare for it. But anyways, we've got some innovative boats that we've leased for our patrolling. NAC, the local rowing and paddleboard agency in town, run by Billy Whitford, has put together some of his older cat brands, like the Coaches boats. And so they're going to have a 25-horsepower engine, which is very fuel-efficient and quiet, and the boats don't really create much more than a one- or two-inch wake when they're moving along. So people that have been complaining over the years about the speeding, you know, patrol boats and whatnot wrecking their boats, slamming into the docks, and the docks racking, and so we're going to hopefully eliminate a lot of that and give it a whirl. But I look forward to working with you, and thank you for having me tonight.
Excellent, thank you, and welcome. I think we have a couple comments from the, from the dais. Do you have a second? Mayor Potem Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we are heading into new waters, and we're very excited to have you, Dennis, and we're, I think, very lucky to, to have your experience. What we are, we're not getting rid of the Sheriff's Department, if you will. This is the harbor department. It's a different animal, and there'll still be law enforcement and such. But what we have out there is a, is a huge, wonderful, great park, just happens to be filled with water instead of grass. And what we want to do is make all the inhabitants of the, of the park happy and inform them of what they are maybe doing wrong, and maybe get them to do it a little better, and on and on with all, all of our ordinances in a way that is friendly, informative, and promotes the great harbor that we have. And Dennis is perfect for the job. This is a trial period. We hope to get through this trial period and prove that there's, this has a lot of merit. And I'm just looking, I just am elated that it's finally come to this, and, and, again, the sheriffs are, have a place, and, and, and so we're going to work together with them and, and create, and continue to have the largest small boat harbor and the happiest and the funnest in the world. Thanks.
Thank you, and thanks for your vision on this, Councilman Duffield. Any other comments from the dais?
I would just follow, Mayor, that Dennis will be stationed out at Marina Park. If you're looking for him, our Water Operations will be out of that. He'll be soon having staff join him out here. And I know Dennis will be spending a lot of time on the water, so you'll see him out there, too, with his friendly face. And thank you, Dennis, for joining us.
Great, thank you. Anything else from staff? Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which councilmembers may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 11 and supplemental item 19. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Council, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neill?
Need to recuse myself on item 6 due to a real property interest conflict. I will not pull any items.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter?
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Potam Duffield?
I have none.
For myself, I have to recuse myself on item 10 as I work for a company that is involved in wireless telecommunications. Mayor Potam Duffield, do you have any motions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 11, with recusal from Mayor Muldoon on item number 10 and with recusal from Councilman O'Neill on item number 6.
I second the motion.
And also supplemental item S19 included in the motion?
Yeah, and that too.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Let's go out to the public for comments on consent calendar. Please approach.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It seems a small matter, but your agenda item number 3 is the adoption of the city's spending limit and you will be adopting a resolution. The resolution has attached to it a computation of the city's new spending limit for the coming year. The resolution seems to have the wrong number in the computation. It's announcing in big letters, its computation has the wrong number. I didn't see any corrected copies in the lobby. I would think you might be wanting to correct the resolution before you adopt it. And the second thing, I'm a little bit surprised that agenda item 5 went by without comment. This is your signing off on the completion of the Balboa Village entry arch. This is a project that some people think is kind of an example of wasteful government. It was originally budgeted back in 2014, expected to cost $200,000 with $20,000 for the design of the arch and for $180,000 for the construction of it. You'll be signing off tonight on a bill of $250,000 for constructing it. You add in the design cost, $270,000, and I have no idea how much city staff might have spent on it. Became quite an expensive project. I'm a little puzzled also that there's a letter attached to the staff report in which it appears that there was quite a lot of trouble with the contractor and the city was threatening, in fact, saying that the contractor was going to be docked $11,000, which is not a huge penalty, out of the $250,000. And the final report is showing that they only penalized $4,000 for their many screw-ups on the project. I'm wondering why we told them it was $11,000 and now the council is approving only $4,000. And finally, since we spent all this money on it, I'm wondering if we're getting any return on our investment and this is actually turning into the great travel icon that we expected to be and people are having their photo taken with it on social media or whatever we expected to happen with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? On item 5, some of us up here voted against the item, but we still can vote for accepting the project as completed and satisfactory and that the individual who was hired should be paid. So that's, the item to approve this is totally separate from this item, which simply approving that it's complete work. All right. Any other comments on any items from the dais? Seeing none, let's vote in the motion. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Those are items that are not agendized for this evening. Yes, Mrs. Gardner?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Nancy Gardner and I'm wearing a different hat tonight, metaphorically. I am representing the Friends of the Newport Beach Animal Shelter. This is a new nonprofit founded by such community stalwarts as Gene Watt, Evelyn Hart, Walt Howell, and others. And our sole purpose is to raise money for the shelter. We are very fortunate to have a dedicated staff and a dedicated group of volunteers who work to make the animals that come to the shelter as comfortable as possible, but also to make their stay as short as possible. The goal being to get every animal adopted. And of course, the animals come in all sorts of different conditions. Some are ready to go right away. Others require care, even veterinary bills. And we want to be sure that no animal goes unadopted because of a shortage of funds. Now, I don't have a check for you tonight because we are brand-new, but we will have soon, I'm sure, in the future, funds for improved services, amenities, even to buy the building, however you as a council decide to allocate those funds. So we're very excited to be working with the shelter to help them achieve their goal of placing every animal and we look forward to working with you also in achieving that goal. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there public comments on non-agenda items this evening?
Hi, Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Peninsula. I heard Scott earlier talk about the on-leash policies in the area. That's on the agenda. Is that correct?
Mr. Pieter placed it on. As for discussion items, as to whether or not place it on the future agenda?
Okay. All right. Awesome. Thank you, Scott, for that. Appreciate it. There's a lot of people that care about dogs, Nancy Gardner included. We've been, as you know, at this issue here for 19 months now and I appreciate everybody up there, your support and coming out in support of that. Thank you, Scott, for putting this on the agenda. I did have, did have something to clarify, though. The trolley is not a free trolley. It's subsidized by taxpayers. It averages out, when you take the full amount into it, to be $22 per ride each way, $44 round trip. Supposedly, this is supposed to help with the businesses in the area. We get sales tax from the business, 7.75 percent. Assuming Newport got all of that sales tax revenue, which we know that we don't, they would have to spend $293 per person, per trip, to make this work. I'm going to doubt that that's likely to happen. I think that what we're likely doing is we're throwing money at something that's not going to be productive here. But that is not why I'm here. I wanted to say thank you for all of you, for your support and moving everything forward with the leash policies on the dog. We've got a lot of good policies in Newport. We've got some quirks. We need to work them out and I appreciate everybody up there doing that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
I'm Peter Sunidewell, Mayor Muldoon, council. Today I want to discuss the environment, in particular, our harbors and our beaches. Without them, we surely would not be Newport Beach. There are those among us that publicly profess to care about the environment while their actions and deeds behind the scenes tell a different story. Imagine for a moment if we had a local citizen who willfully and purposely dumped 10,000 gallons of fuel into the harbor and was fined hundreds of thousands of dollars by the EPA. Outrageous, right? To add to the absurdity, let's pretend that even after committing a heinous environmental crime, that this person was voted on to the Harbor Commission by the current mayor. Unfortunately, a similar scenario actually happened and that person is sitting on our Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission today. As a third-generation Newport Beach resident, I wouldn't expect a newcomer to Newport Beach, especially one that has crowned mayor inside of 36 months, to recall past events from our local history. This is just one of the dangers of electing someone with no local knowledge. However, I would expect Dave Kiff to recall the intentional destruction of the critical habitat in West Newport, as he was quoted in the Orange County Register regarding the crime. Of the things residents wouldn't like, crowds and storms, you can add sand dunes to that list. The residents will hate them if they're riding against their house, harming their views, yet they do have those habitat values. So you can imagine my surprise, or possibly lack thereof, when a known destroyer of our environment, one who aligns with statements such as "we're not anti-dog, we're pro-environment", ends up on the very commission the city has tasked to protect our beaches. Diane Dixon on her campaign website speaks of doing the right thing and frequently is quoted in the media stating "I'm all about process." I may be the first to inform this council that nothing can be further from the truth regarding the process of vetting and voting for David Granoff for Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commissioner. Diane, had you performed a simple Google search of "Dave Granoff Newport Beach," on the page 1 is a link to the story documenting the criminal destruction of Lee Stern's snowy plover habitat. One can only assume that his mayor at the time, not performing your own due diligence on an applicant from your very own district or even a Google search, was either due to negligence or worse, the fix was in to insure an anti-dog beach commissioner over two fully-qualified female applicants. David Granoff, as part of a cabal willfully and intentionally destroyed critical habitat in violation of multiple coastal act statutes, was fined $225,000 by the Coastal Commission and was forced to reimburse the Newport Beach Police Department $4,100 for their criminal investigation costs. Equally disturbing is Commissioner Granoff's application for appointed position received by the city clerk on May 11, 2016. The very first question asked, "Have you ever been convicted of any crime or any violation of any law or statute other than minor traffic violations?" Mr. Granoff checked, "No." Diane, if you truly cared about the environment, you would have never voted for someone who intentionally destroyed the very thing you proclaim as stopping your support of dog beach, not even in your jurisdiction. Mayor Muldoon, per council policy 813, I believe it is incumbent that you immediately ask for Mr. Granoff's resignation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. I just had a brief procedural comment. For the last year or two, the city staff has had the very useful practice, which they took upon themselves to do, of before your meetings, placing in the lobby a tentative agenda of items that were scheduled for your future meetings so that both you and the public would know items that were coming up. And I just wanted to say, I've noticed at the last meeting and apparently at tonight's meeting, there is no tentative agenda out there. And I hope that you can encourage the city staff to resume that practice. It was very useful and I'm pleased to say that the Community Development Department has been maintaining that practice at the Planning Commission meetings. So one does see items scheduled for your future council meetings at the Planning Commission meetings and that can be found in their meeting archives on the city website. It would be nice if the practice was resumed at these council meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on non-agenda items? Okay. Seeing none? Or reports from city council on committee activities? Mr. O'Neill?
None.
Mr. Pieter?
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Avery?
None.
Mayor Potam Duffield?
I have none.
All right, moving on to public hearings. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have a couple of public hearings tonight and they can be fairly brief, at least the first two. And those involve the confirming the levying of assessments for, first, the Coronel Omar bid, Business Improvement District, and naming the advisory board. Second public hearing after that involves the restaurant bid. Mary Losi is here if you have any questions about that. This is a fairly routine item for you, so we didn't have a presentation to provide to you unless you wanted more detail.
Thank you. Are there any requests for a presentation from the dais? All right, seeing none. Let's go out to the public. Public comments on this item?
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name is, again, is Jim Mosher. I've noticed the council often recommends moving the recommended action. That's often what you say to do. I would point out, if you actually read the current staff report and the recommended action, if you get to item number D, which has to do with the advisory board, you'll find the recommended action is missing a word. So you want to put in there that the action is to appoint people to the board. Without the word "appoint," it doesn't really mean anything. I would also point out that the list of appointments to the board, you have to read fairly far into the staff report to realize it's actually two members short of the number of people needed to fill the board. And the fact that there aren't enough people interested in the board to fill the board kind of tells you something about the interest of the general business community in that area, in their activity. I have the greatest respect for the people who donate their time to be on the board and their interest in it, but one wonders about the activity and kind of contrasts that with Balboa Village, where the city showers money on the local merchants without the local merchants having to lift a finger. Seems kind of inequitable. But anyway, before you recommend the recommended action, I think you want to put the word "appoint" in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Council, any comments or questions? Councilman O'Neill?
I move the recommended action with the word "appoint."
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? Let's vote.
Well, I want to make a note that I have not received any protests relative to this Business Improvement District, so council can adopt the resolution.
So noted. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Item 13, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this next item, Mary Losi does have a note. Should you find, should you end up appointing the board, the district advisory board, one member has asked to be, to have his name withdrawn.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kiff, could you repeat that?
Mary will fill us in. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I did get a email from one member that was nominated for the board, Mr. Will Avalos. He is asked to step down from appointment. Other than that, everybody's listed, is ready to go.
Thank you. And I see a typo as well. I see that it says Muldoon's Irish Pub is owned by Ron Schwartz. And I don't know how that happened, Ron, but you do a great job. Are there any other comments from staff?
I want to note also, I have not received any protests.
Thank you. Public comments on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Back to the dais. Councilman O'Neill?
I move the recommended action.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Next item will not be as quick. Item 14.
It could be quick. Could be quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This next item is the consideration of the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2017-18. That's the year that starts July 1st, so just a few weeks away. We have a brief staff presentation to make and just as a reminder to you and to the folks at home, the council, as well as the Finance Committee, have spent several hours looking at this document. So tonight's kind of the end of it and we don't want to regurgitate it all for you. Of course, unless you had questions, we're happy to do that. So we do have a brief presentation. I'll note that I'm joined here and in the audience by Finance Director Dan Matashevitz, Deputy Director Steve Montano, and Budget Manager Susan Giangrande. And if I forget at the end, I just wanted to thank them for all the hard work they and their staffs put into this document because this is a big time of year for them. This is tonight. It's led up, all their work has led up to tonight. So hopefully there are fairly few issues, but we're happy to talk about those. So I'm going to go through a brief presentation, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
It is.
Mr. Mayor, I will need to recuse myself from this. I have a real property interest.
Actually, we will coordinate the recusals with you, so you don't have to leave quite yet.
Great. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, next slide, please, Dan. So this is kind of a wrap-up presentation. Again, I'm not going through the key points of the budget. If folks are curious about those, they can go back and look at these on video. This is a time when we bring a number of things to you that we're required to bring to you. One is, this basic slide is just a report on how the district discretionary grants are allocated in 2016-17. And I will make a note, we had a question last year involving, I think, maybe it was a couple of years ago, a council member that had left the council, had deleted all the funds in the discretionary account within that councilperson's time. And I have to note that this occurred again. So under District 7, the council member is actually Mr. O'Neill, but we set this up so this is the individual that will have allocated the funds. I'm sorry.
So you're saying, so you're saying, Dave, that Councilman Curry knew I was going to be getting on, but he depleted the funds before I could get on. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's another way of putting it, yes.
Fair enough.
But again, this is an obligation per one of your council policies that we explain where these funds go at least once a year. So unless you have any questions, we'll just move to the next slide.
Any questions? Don't see any.
Okay. This next slide is addressed within the checklist. So I'm not going to go through the entire checklist, but I did want to highlight this aspect of it. And this is what you heard from Dennis Durgan just a few minutes ago. This is how the budget changes for the new harbor operations program are accommodated in the checklist. And in other words, what we're basically moving, some professional services contracts, such as the sheriff's contract with, to do mooring management, we're moving that money to a new harbor operations division. And that will include some salaries and benefits, including Mr. Durgan's, and then a lot of the part-time staff. So just briefly showing you the slide and noting, especially my, there's no net increase in funds in this operation. But we will be back in the fall with a report back on how it all went and hopefully we'll be high-fiving everyone because it wrote really well. But we'll have a better understanding for the seasonality of some of these funds, some of these expenditures, at that point. Unless there's any questions, we'll move to the next slide.
Seeing none.
Okay. So this is the budget checklist and I'm going to summarize it briefly and then we'll go through a process about conflicts. So if you move to the next, and just as a reminder for the folks at home that are not familiar with this terminology, we produce a proposed budget each year and we produce that roughly in March. So a number of things happen between March, April, and May, and then tonight. And those are items that we put on the checklist. So consider the checklist as potential amendments to the proposed budget. If the council adopts the checklist and the budget, they're adopting an amended budget tonight. So that's why we have this, that we can't always predict three months ago what is going to be relevant tonight. So, next slide, please. So I did want to make one comment. The checklist is extraordinarily long this year and this is why. We are trying to be more transparent and this involves the public work side of things. We have a new, fully-implemented software product this year. It does allow us greater specificity to show It does allow us greater specificity to show how funds go and what accounts they are and where they are. So in previous years, we would have done this just by phraseology in the resolution, but this year, they're actually line-by-line items that show basically what we, what actually Councilmember Dixon calls them "carry forwards." It's a good term. We call them "rebudgets," which basically means it's a capital improvement project that didn't end on July, it won't end on July thirtieth, sorry, June 30th. In other words, projects don't just all magically get complete on June 30th. So some of those projects that are ongoing, especially capital ones, we need to carry through from one budget year to the next. So that's what a rebudget or a carry forward is. And that's why the checklist itself is so long this year. Next slide. Really briefly, I'm just going to, this is the checklist as printed. You'll see a number of items on there. I'm not going to go through each one, but we certainly welcome your questions. How about the next slide? Again, just, this is the kind of the maintenance and operations side. The previous was the salary side. Next slide. And these then are the CIP rebudgets that I just mentioned, and there's probably three slides that look like this. So next, next, next. Great. I think, so let's go through the next slide, and then we'll come back to the checklist. Next slide, please. So the proposed staffing in this is still a no-net-change budget, even with the addition of folks like Dennis. And this is, so I'm asking for consideration of some eliminations in positions, and those are listed on the left, some additions, and those are on the right. I do want to call attention to one item that, I know there's a position coming off the books in a few weeks. I'd rather not identify it, but I wanted your permission, when that position comes off the books, to add a Public Works Inspector Two to replace that position. This, in effect, has a net savings, because the Public Works Inspectors coming in at a different pension tier, a pepper tier, are actually cheaper than our current contracts. So this is, my goal has been to not have any increase in full-time positions, which are, you see the term "full-time equivalent" there, but they're full-time positions. So with that permission tonight, and consideration of that, the budget would stay flat in terms of new full-time positions. Next slide. Oops, a little too fast. Anybody have any questions about what we've presented so far?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Dave, on the checklist item, one of the things that I was trying to reconcile, in the staff report, there are two checklists. One of them on page 4-12, and the other on 4-19. It looks like we're looking at the one that's on 4-19. The only reason I ask that is because the one on 4-12, in the CIP rebudget section, shows an increase to the budget of $33 million, and the one on 4-19 shows a decrease to the budget of $3.4 million. Maybe this is a Susan question or a Dan question, but I'm trying to...
It definitely is.
Okay. I was wondering what the first one is, because if we're not voting on it, I didn't understand what the purpose of showing that one in the staff report was.
I am not familiar with the one in the staff report. It shouldn't have shown the $33 million. It should have shown roughly the negative 3.5 reduction to the rebudgets, because the Public Works Department has finished more projects than anticipated when we prepared the proposed. We did have one version floating out there that was not correct. It restated the rebudgets, so maybe that one got posted. I'm not sure.
So you're confident, Susan, that this one that we're talking about tonight is the actual one, the correct one?
It is the correct one, and it changes the, your total approved CIP plan for fiscal year 18 will end up at $60.9 million, just over $25.7 million in new appropriations, and the rebudgets ended at $35.19 million.
Okay. So I might, I'm going to, Mr. Mayor, is it okay? I might spend a couple of minutes on this, because it's actually a lot of money, and it's pretty important.
One second. Mr. Kiff, does this fall under the checklist item, or is this miscellaneous?
It's miscellaneous, and I think Aaron is fine if we talk about it in the broader scope.
Just for the dais, so Councilman O'Neil is addressing a miscellaneous item, so feel free to interrupt and do the same or ask questions. The checklist items will be discussing after public comments, so individuals can remove themselves. But for this, it's proper.
Okay. So when I'm looking, all right, that's important, because I think, all right, I'll come back to that. But, so when I'm looking at the checklist then, and just so the public knows, Mr. Kiff is correct, the Finance Committee was able to look at this document, being the budget and the CIP, for a number of months now, or at least, if you're right, maybe dozens of hours, just not the checklist. So this is why we're, I'm going to spend some time making sure I understand it before we go out to vote on, and discussion on it. So when I'm looking at the checklist item, and the CIP section would be a net reduction of about $3.4 million. Above that, it shows all of the funds, just like our CIP does, and one of them is General Fund CIP, and it's showing a net reduction of $1.7 million. Do you see where I'm at? Susan? $1.7 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So in total, if we approved that section of checks, all of them, that would actually reduce the general fund expenditures by $1.7 million in the budget?
It just transfers the fiscal year. So Public Works will spend that money in fiscal year 17 instead of fiscal year 18.
Okay. How does that affect the proposed budget, total amount of expenditures?
It reduces what will be spent in fiscal year 18, but it doesn't change any of the projects that were underway or planned.
So when we're looking at this budget detailed document, the entire thing, fiscal year 17-18, are you saying that the, when it shows about $202 million being spent out of the general fund, would that be reduced by $1.7 million, or would next year's budget be reduced by $1.7?
The $202 is reflective of the operating budget, so this reduction would affect the capital improvement budget, and it would move the spending until, to fiscal year 17. So more projects are being completed earlier than we thought in March.
Okay. March of '17?
This March, when we prepared the fiscal year 18 budget, there was an estimated amount of projects that we were going to move forward to fiscal year 18, and Public Works has just moved faster, or they're contractors. So we will be spending that money in the current fiscal year.
So it would reduce the overall CIP rebudget?
Yes.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
It affects both years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on miscellaneous, or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Pieter.
A follow-up question. So in our original checklist, we got shown about $33.3 million for the CIP expenditure, and those were the carryover. Now it says 3.4 credit. I need a little bit better big picture. I understand what Will's saying, as far as, okay, you're adjusting it. Put it in place for me.
The checklist that was attached to the staff report was prepared when Public Works and budget staff thought we were restating the full checklist. We realized that was an incorrect methodology, and the version that we handed out tonight does reflect just the changes from the rebudgets presented in the proposed budget document.
So if I could recap what has been presented in the budget, in the detailed budget, we were showing that $37.4 million of capital projects were initially...
Carried over.
Proposed to be re-appropriated. And since then, Public Works has informed us that they're spending, they've spent or encumbered some of those funds, so we're reducing that $37.4 of re-appropriations downwards.
Okay, so the $3.4 million credit that you're talking about, really, you're keeping that in the '16-17 budget year, rather than carrying it over?
Correct.
And that's all you're adjusting from the budget detail book that we've got already?
Correct.
Rather than restating what you're spending, you're showing it as a credit? All right, thank you.
Please proceed. Staff?
So unless there are no more questions about that, that's the completion of our presentation. We do have the recommended actions, that we could jump to that slide, but I know, because this is a public hearing, you have an opportunity for the public to comment, and then we would like to address some of the city attorney's concern, allow, go through, what, six items that are potential conflicts, and then you can come back and vote on the entire checklist and budget, should you choose.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public comments. Then we'll return to, after the hearings close, to go over the checklist items individually and deal with conflict issues. So comments from the public?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, regarding the very early slide we saw about the council discretionary grants, I was a little surprised to see that, because I didn't see it mentioned on the agenda. I didn't see it in the agenda packet. I didn't see it in the lobby outside. That policy regarding the discretionary grants originally, when it was first proposed, actually required the council members to publicly announce at the council meetings when, in a timely fashion, when they were making expenditures from those funds, and it's since morphed into this annual report. And I'm wondering if that was available for the public to see at any time before this meeting, because I was not aware of it. A second comment I wanted to make, it's kind of just a general comment. The checklist has very specific expenditures in it, but the budget you'll be approving tonight has many kind of generic, open-ended, blank check, one might say, items that are just designated for some general purpose, and it's somewhat left up to the city staff how to use them. There's a difference between, which I would like to observe, between setting aside money for future use and then actually using that money wisely. And sometimes I wonder whether the city government is using its money wisely, and I speak from personal experience in the last month or so. If you will recall, among those open-ended items, there is money set aside in the budget, quite a large amount for possible use on attorney's fees, litigation expenses. And as you know, I submitted a letter to you on May 11th, raising an objection to what seemed to me an open-and-shut case of a Brown Act violation that the council had made on April 11th. And I expected and hoped that the council would just remedy that by putting the item, which was moving the Ronald Reagan Centennial Memorial, to the civic center on a future agenda. Cost-free, simple solution to the problem. And I was surprised that the attitude of the city government was just to use those open-ended funds that the city has available for litigation, and just not even schedule you to discuss a possible response to that, but to say, "Oh, we have money in the budget. Let him sue, and the city will pay for that." I don't find that a wise, responsible way to use the budget. So I hope the budget you're approving tonight will be used more wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? That's not the Jim Mosher Defense Fund. It's for our serious litigation that we anticipate coming down the pike. Right, at this time, let's parse it out. Aaron, why don't you lead us through quickly how this is going to go for the sake of conflicts in the hearing?
So just briefly, there are several items on the checklist where individual council members potentially have a conflict. So we're going to go through those items first, and the council members that have a potential conflict will recuse themselves, leave the room, will deal with that item from the checklist, and then they'll come back, and the next council member will leave. And like Dave said, there are six items, and we'll try to do it by council members, we can do all their items at once, they don't have to keep getting up back and forth. And I'll turn back to Dave.
So there would be three items that Mr. Hurdman has a conflict on, so why don't we take those first, if Mr. Hurdman wouldn't mind stepping out? They are Marine Avenue reconstruction, Balboa Island enhancements, and fire station remodels. And I believe that has to do with Mr. Proximity, sorry, Mr. Hurdman's property ownership proximity.
That's correct.
So very simply, the question for you is, does anyone have any questions about these three items? And if not, Mr. Hurdman can come back in.
I see...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Mr. Pieter, are you in the queue? Yes.
Does that also include the Balboa Island Historical Society for Mr. Hurdman?
I don't know that that's a conflict for him.
He's on the board of the Historical Society? Sounds like a conflict to me.
So when we deal with these issues right now, we hadn't discussed that item with him. I didn't know he was on the board. So maybe I could talk to him briefly about that, and we can just deal with the other items at this moment, and then we'll deal with that item separately.
So far, that's not an item that I listed, so that works with what Aaron said.
Let me discuss it with him, and then we'll deal with the Balboa Island Historical Society in a few minutes.
Yeah, that's acceptable. Councilman O'Neil?
Just to make sure, I know where these items are. Are these, are all of these items on the CIP rebudgets?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
What are the three, again?
You want me to read them? One is Marine Avenue reconstruction, Balboa Island enhancements. The third one is, you want to jump down the page to fire station remodels.
And I just spoke to council member Hurdman, who says he is on the board for the Balboa Island Historical Society, so he will be recusing himself from that item as well, if you want to discuss it.
When it comes up. So we, should we have that be part of the discussion right now while he's out of the room? Great. Okay. Once Mr. O'Neil's questions are answered, we'll proceed to that.
Can I just give you some brief background? Mr. Hurdman, the Balboa Island Historical Society has received a certain allocation of funds from us in the past. It assists with their operations. Those funds have ranged from, say, $10,000 to, I think, $25,000 last year.
Okay, but we're not, I don't think we're on that item yet, Mr. Kiff. Yeah, that's okay. So first off, Mr. O'Neil, was your question answered?
Yes, but I was going to ask about the Historical Society, so I'll wait.
Yeah, we'll come to that. Okay. Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, I'm bringing up the Historical Society. Help me with my memory, Mr. Kiff. I think I brought this up last year or the year before, that I'm supportive, generally, certainly, of the Balboa Island Historical Society, but I'm a process, that this particular donation from the city should be incorporated in our special events or community funds that are managed from your office, and they go through, each of the organizations, nonprofit organizations submits an application. There's a budget allocation in the budget that's approved, but the individual disbursements are approved per application, and we do this in the fall, if I'm not mistaken. So my question is, we did this the other way, the way I reckon, two years ago, I recommended that we put these special requests into the larger pool to consider as part of these applications, but now this is back. So I have a question about that, that I think it should be considered as part of all the applications that come forward. Otherwise, and this isn't against the historical, my, the principle that I'm basing my statement on is, there are many organizations in the community that would make an appeal to a council member, and they get slotted into the budget without any formal process going through an application review by members of your staff and then by the council. I would just like it to be handled that way. That's my comment.
Thank you. Now, before we talk anymore about the Historical Society, are there any comments or questions about Marine Avenue, Balboa Island enhancements, or fire station remodels? Okay. Now, let's go on to the next item. So, Mr. Harp, that item has not been brought for discussion yet, so Mr. Hurdman was not in the room, so there's no issue for him there. Now that we bring up the item, and he has disclosed that he is on the board, do you advise that we continue this out per Mrs. Dixon's request, or is it acceptable to discuss that item at this time?
So it is acceptable to go ahead and discuss it at this time. I think, you know, the real question here is whether you want to leave the money in the budget or not, or handle it differently. So if you want to proceed, it's fine to discuss it.
Okay. So now I see some council members who probably want to discuss this item specifically. So, Councilman Pieter. Okay. Councilman O'Neil?
So my understanding is, if a council member has a conflict, they're not actually, they're not supposed to engage in the process at all, engaged in dealing with the issue. So now that we're under the, now that we're aware that Mr. Hurdman has a conflict, is it even appropriate for this to be on the checklist, given that he's the one who requested it in the first place?
Was it, or did you put it on? Okay. Yeah, I didn't have a little bit of the history of that. So... Okay, yeah, I didn't have a little bit of the history of that. So, I think that, at this point, it'd probably be best to just not consider the item at all. So, maybe I misunderstood the question that I was being asked earlier. I didn't understand that he put it on the checklist. So, it was probably best to go ahead and have it removed from the checklist. I think that can only be done by council action, unless Dave wants to take it off the checklist, prove it himself.
Yeah, in light of what, because I learned that just now, too, about Mr. Hurdman's role there, I could certainly suggest that the checklist is presented to you without that item on there.
So, we'll deem it as a staff removal of the item?
Perfect.
That way, you don't have to take action on it.
Thank you. All right, let's proceed. At this time, let's
Bring Mr. Hurdman back?
That's right.
So, the next item, as Mr. Hurdman is coming back in, would be, let's pick on Mr. Mayor Protam Duffy. It would be the Mariners Mile Highway Configuration Land Use Review, which is a $60,000 item. This is just one item for Mr. Duffy. And again, this is a property proximity issue for him. It's the Mariners Mile Highway Configuration Land Use Review. It's right below a couple of ones we just discussed. Sorry, the question would be if you had any items, any issues with that one, that would be in the proposed checklist.
Yeah, I see a request here from Councilman O'Neil. Oh, I'm sorry.
Shows me still speaking. I'm not.
Okay. Any other, any comments or questions on the Mariners Mile Configuration Land Use Review? All right, seeing none, should we bring Mayor Protam Duffy back?
Yes, sir. And then the next one would be for Mr. O'Neil. This involves a median landscape and turf replacement. It's about 25 items down the list there. I think that's Mr. O'Neil has, again, a property proximity issue.
But you're talking about the landscape median replacement on San Miguel.
I believe that's it, yeah.
No discussion.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I don't see any requests to discuss the median landscaping, so I believe Councilman O'Neil may re-enter.
The last one, then, is for Councilmember Avery. It involves the Newport Heights Traffic Study. And there is a proposal to, that would stay on the checklist. Oh, sorry, basis is a property interest of Mr. Avery, proximity again.
I'll wait for Mr. O'Neil to return. And is there any requests to discuss Newport Heights Traffic Study?
It's a little bit further, it's near the end. It's, this is actually a new CIP appropriation.
Any? All right, I see none.
And just briefly, Mayor Muldoon, technically according to the FPPC rules, each council member is supposed to announce their own conflict. So, does everyone agree with basically Dave's summary of the conflicts, or does anybody have any changes?
When Mr. Avery returns, I'll have every person lodge their reason for excusing themselves.
All right, thank you, Mayor Muldoon.
Mr. O'Neil, would you like to lodge for the record your reason for excusing yourself?
My recusal was due to a real property interest.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam Duffy, would you like to state for the record your reason?
I recuse myself for a property issue on the coast highway.
Thank you. Mr. Hurdman, would you like to state the reasons why you recused yourself on the three items?
Yes.
Were they property-based, or?
Property-based, yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Avery, would you please state for the record your reason for excusing yourself on Newport Heights Traffic Study?
My home is within 500 feet of the project.
Thank you.
So, with that, Mr. Mayor, the item then before you, the recommended action, would be, unless you had any further questions about the checklist, it's to adopt the, actually, maybe we jump to that. So, you conducted the hearing. You could straw-vote more checklist items, but if you're comfortable with this, you could lump the, sorry, vote the checklist as an amendment to the budget in one action. I do believe Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Dixon wanted to make a brief comment about the Finance Committee's recommendation to cover those. But then finally, sorry, your action would be wrapped into basically adopting Resolution 201743 as amended by the checklist. I'm sorry that this is so confusing. It just tends to be.
Okay, so, thank you. Before a motion is made, before comments are made by Chairperson Dixon, Finance Committee, can I just clarify that everyone has stated their reasons for recusing, they've recused themselves for the sake of discussion, and then they're all able to lodge a vote in affirmative if they approve the budget, including all the checklist and items, including the ones they have conflicts on? Or do they have to state, for the record, "I vote for everything but for the items I have a conflict on"?
So, according to the Political Reform Act, they have to recuse themselves from the discussion of the specific items, but they're free to vote on the entire budget. So, it's perfectly acceptable to vote on the entire budget. They just need to recuse themselves from their specific items, and they've stated those conflicts.
So, that motion can be very simple, essentially?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to report that after six open and public meetings, where the Finance Committee reviewed in-depth the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2017/18 city budget and the CIP, the committee on June 1st, 2017, voted 5-0 in support, Mayor Muldoon and Mr. Collopy having excused absences, to recommend that the city council adopt the proposed budget. Included in that recommendation was the following: The committee's opinion that the funds allocated for the projects in the proposed capital improvement program, CIP, appeared appropriate in terms of overall city expenditures, and comments were not made on individual projects within the CIP. The committee believed that the city council makes those decisions. Secondly, a belief that the additional discretionary payment of about approximately $9 million for unfunded pension liability be allocated to CalPERS over a 12-month period, starting July 2017, under the concept of dollar-cost averaging. And thirdly, a statement that the committee intends to review the use of a Section 115 pension trust involving future funds that could also be used to address the unfunded pension liability. The committee intends to review this with the city's consultant in fall of 2017. The committee members individually expressed their comments and questions about various expenditures, revenue assumptions, pension payment plans, and efficiency strategies. The committee engaged in what I believe was a rigorous debate about many aspects of the budget and the city's operations. Staff was present at all times to offer perspectives and answers. Additionally, the city's pension consultant, Mr. John Bartel, was present either in person or by telephone to comment and advise on the city's unfunded pension liability and alternatives to address it. I continue to be pleased with the manner in which the Finance Committee operates, with robust dialogue and a willingness to address virtually any issue, financial issue related to the budget. I believe that the committee comprised of three council members and four citizen members is serving the community and council well. We are particularly pleased during these budget sessions with the new long-range planning, financial planning model, as developed by staff, and the new Socrata Budget Portal, which will allow our residents to better understand and comment on the city's budget. I extend my appreciation to the committee for its work on the 2017-18 proposed budget, and I also extend my thanks to city staff for the staff's active participation in our deliberations. I believe that the community can take great pride in this fiscally responsible, forward-looking budget and the committee's overall work effort. I commend the excellent leadership of the city council and the solid expertise of the city staff in bringing this budget forward for year review and adoption. I'd like to move adoption of the fiscal year 2017-18 budget and the approved checklist items as amended and the Finance Committee's recommendations.
Thank you. Is there a second?
May I seek clarification?
Yes, you may. On the motion?
On the motion, you moved approval of a checklist, but I don't believe we've approved that quite yet.
Are we, is it one motion? Isn't it one motion to approve the entire budget with the checklist items?
Oh, you're moving to approve all of the checklist.
Well, as amended, we made that one change.
Thank you.
Actually, staff made the change. We withdrew the Historical Society item, including that.
Yes, okay.
Then I second.
Thank you. So, clarification, the motion is to approve the budget along the checklist items. Motion made by Councilwoman Dixon, seconded by Councilman O'Neil. Is there any discussion on this item?
Oh, yeah. And I presume, point of order, that you're looking at maybe amending the motion, if there's something else that we decide that we do or don't want in here. I was looking for some clarifications from Mr. Kiff. You've got the checklist that you put out tonight, but there's a few differences besides the CIP budget amounts from the one that was in our staff report, one of which was the prevailing wages to the tree trimming, and then also the, I see you added some fireplace or some fire pit enforcement. And then I did have a simple question, information question, on the Orange County Sanitation District contract staff support, just what that is.
Can we, we'll tackle the OCSD one quickly, because it's easier?
Sure.
And actually, I have to ask if Dan knows, otherwise, if Mr. Webb knows.
So, my understanding, this is a grant we've received in the current year, and we've just agreed to do some of the work for them. And so, we received the money in advance, and we proposed we need to fulfill that obligation in the next year, or otherwise, we'd have to return that money.
So, the income was shown last fiscal year, and we're doing the work this fiscal year?
Correct.
So, it is almost like a carryover, then?
Correct.
Okay, the other items?
Certainly. The prevailing wage item, I remove that from the checklist, because I think there's another way to handle that, that I want to work on with staff before presenting that back to you. And that involves our tree trimming contract. So, I just felt that that needed more review on our part before presenting that to you.
Okay, so, don't ask questions. We'll wait.
Okay.
That works for me.
Okay. On the fire ring item, I, as I let, I let Mr. Piattar, and I believe Mr. Mayor Muldoon know this, I had a contact with the South Coast Air Quality Management District last week, and they were, they were asking us to consider going back to the, what we were doing with fire rings, which involves some onsite supervision, and haven't decided that that's going to happen or not. But I felt it was important to ask for the budget authorization to do that with a decision to come soon after that. Thus, I put that on the checklist.
Okay, so it's not necessarily locking us into a certain path, but it does allow a budget for us to try and comply somehow?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, I'm okay with that. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil?
One other clarification. Susan, assuming that the checklist is passed as a total, expenditures will be lower than projected revenues, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Always nice to point out.
Any other comments or discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none? Yes?
Just a couple of comments. I want to echo Councilwoman Dixon's comments about the Finance Committee. We've been meeting every two weeks for the last three, four months on this item. I'd like to commend Councilwoman Dixon for her chair and leadership on that Finance Committee. This is the culmination of a lot of work by staff. So, I'd certainly like to say thank you, Susan. Thank you, Dan, and thank you to your entire staff. Thank you, Mr. Kiff, as well. The priorities that were set at the beginning of the year by Mayor Muldoon in his year as mayor are in this budget. And I commend you for the leadership on that, because you see the pension paydown is the largest the city has ever expended. The $6 million that will be going toward the harbor is an enormous investment in the harbor from general fund into the, in the tidings. And that is thanks in large part to the work of Councilman Duffy, or Mayor Protam Duffy, and Councilman Avery pushing hard on these issues and bubbling up, and they're here. And so, the priorities that have been laid out by this council from the moment we were all elected, and even before then, they're in this budget. And so, I'm, you know, it's a lot of work and an enormous amount of time, effort, expense to get to this point. I just want to say I'm really proud to be up on this council, as we're about to pass this budget.
Thank you, Councilman O'Neil, for all your hard work and shocking, shockling knowledge of numbers and details. I mean, it's impressive. Councilman Piattar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, a real short one. Mr. Kiff, the CDM bid had requested maybe putting some zoning money in for looking at parking and other creative ways to get other uses in there and still comply with parking. I just wanted to clarify, is that something that's in the budget?
We think we have enough money to cover that study that they're asking for.
And the bid sent a letter saying that they would actually cover the traffic
Right.
outside consulting costs.
So, I'm not saying we wouldn't come back to you with an item that did that allocation, but I believe, I don't believe it would require a budget amendment when we came back to you with that. In other words, it's not quite fleshed out enough to direct it into a certain fund, but
So, just to clarify to people that may not be familiar with it, or the rest of the council, the CDM bid has been working kind of hard, trying to figure out ways to get other uses in, and the biggest restriction to that or impediment has been parking. And so, coming up with a creative way to use on-street parking as part of the required parking is the analysis we're looking at to modify the zoning just for CDM. Thank you, Mr. Kiff. And then, I, too, wanted to say, I'm happy with the way the Finance Committee came back with their report. I'm glad for us in going and aggressively paying down our pension bill. I'm glad that we're going to take a hard look at a Section 115 fund to see if that is a viable option. But in the meantime, we'll be making voluntary monthly payments towards CalPERS to reduce our pension fund, but we still have the flexibility of modifying that to 115 if we find that that's an inappropriate course of action. And then I also wanted to emphasize that we're able to do a lot of things in the CIP budget, because we are, we have gotten almost $19 million in development agreement funds from, in this case, downtown Newport Development Project.
Uptown and Purna, right?
I'm sorry, uptown, downtown, yes, uptown Newport. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, we'd just like to add that it's been a pleasure to tackle this issue. It's not a pleasant issue to have. Newport Beach is setting a trend to aggressively pay down our unfunded pension liability and pick up the slack left by Sacramento. And it's been noted in the papers, and I think, I believe it is going to soon be what many cities are doing in anticipation of a less rosy prediction on the market and returns and contributions made. And essentially, every member on this dais has been supportive of it and sees the problem and wishes to protect Newport's reputation for a fiscally sound community. So, with that, let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, as you prepare the vote, I just want to make it clear, Ms. Dixon, you were, your motion including adoption, adopting Resolution 2017-43, which includes the amended checklist, as well as the budget, the sequoia determination, and I think that's everything. Does staff, are you, any questions at all about what's being adopted? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that moment.
A special thanks to staff. Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, on to current business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. The next couple of items are just big-ticket items. Just, you actually just passed the biggest ticket item, but these involve, the first one involves the Newport Heights Alley replacement, and, Mr. Avery?
Hold on just a second.
We do not have a staff presentation, although we could. We've got the experts here, Mark and Dave, in case you had a question, but it's just a big-dollar item to award that. Aaron's checking something briefly. No, okay, we're good. We're good with no conflicts.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none, bring back the dais. Any All right, seeing none, bring it back to dais. Any comments or questions on this before we vote on it? All right, seeing none, I'll move to approve. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Similarly, with the next item, a big-dollar item involving the Mariners Fire Station and the Apparatus Bay replacement, the bids are in. Total bid price award is $977,000.
So I'm going to request a brief staff report this time.
So Mayor Mark McCoheyovich is here to give that staff report for you folks tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. The item before you is the replacement of the Apparatus Bay, otherwise known as the garage for this fire station. It's been on our radar for quite some time. It is, if you notice it, it's a very short garage door. And in fact, recently, when the city upgraded some fire engine equipment, the new fire engine does not fit any longer in that garage, and so now it's parked temporarily outside in a tent. In fact, the old fire engine had to be fully loaded and weighed down with water to be able to fit into this garage. So this project is to basically tear out this apparatus-based garage and to rebuild it with all the new current seismic codes and requirements. And so the new engine can fit in there with your proper equipment in there, and it includes the demolitions. The bay is just slightly longer, and it is much taller, and it is designed to kind of fit in with the existing building, which has been rehabbed over various years. And so the price is $977,000, and it's estimated to take about nine months for construction. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the dais? Councilman O'Neil?
Yeah, this is, this is one of those times where it's worth noting, the funding requirements, and this is for the public, the funding requirements, I'm looking at it, it's the facilities financing plan and the facilities maintenance master plan, correct?
That's correct.
Right, and that is essentially funded by developer fee money, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And then this may be a question for Mr. Harp, but, Mr. Harp, in this particular item, there's been a protest by one of the bidders, and we've received supplemental correspondence. Could you talk to that process so that people understand what that is? And then I suppose the question is, are you confident that enough has been done by the correct, the low bidder, the recommended bidder, for us to be able to bid or vote on this tonight?
Yes, so the main question was whether or not the low bidder submitted a valid bid that was responsive to the request. And there were three issues that were raised, challenging whether or not it was in fact a valid bid. The first one was whether or not they failed to submit a valid bid bond. And typically, a bid bond is there to guarantee that they'll go through with the contract in the event that they are determined to be the low bidder. In this case, the bid bond was executed by a Mr. Hamilton, who basically, according to the documents, lost his ability to sign the day before, on May 18th, and he signed the bid bond on May 19th. Subsequent to our view of this matter, we received a resolution from the company showing that he had, in effect, authority to execute documents through December 31st, 2019. So we feel that that issue's been, has been resolved. They also raised a question about whether there was a failure, whether the bid was valid because there was only one signature by a corporate officer, as opposed to two signatures. The city subsequently received a resolution that showed that one officer had the ability to sign on behalf of the company. And then the last question was whether or not the bid was invalid because the corporate seal wasn't placed in a designated spot. But the corporate seal was placed in accordance with what the bid documents required. So we believe that the bid was responsive, and that there's no impediment to the city going forward at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Duffield?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, real quick thing, it's kind of a, so this was on my radar my first year, and I saw this, and I, Dave Webb will laugh now, but I said to him, "Are you kidding me? We bought a fire truck that's four inches tall, and now it's a million dollars for a new roof." A billion dollars for four inches? And you went on to explain this for the public because it was, it's enlightening. We don't make garages for you, Duffy. We make them for the public, and this structure is substantial, okay? So then I started to remember, oh, yeah, when there's a national, when there's a disaster, you go to places like the fire station and things like this. So this building is not just a regular, regular building. But it did irk me that we were spending a million dollars for four inches of things. So the good news is, that's where I'm going when things get bad. Thank you.
It should remind you the IQ test question, or the famous question, how do you get the fire truck under the roof? You got to let the air out of the tire, and that would get really old. So I think this is the only solution we had.
I tried.
And this is like a million-dollar fire truck, right?
Think of all the life we got out of this building now. It did need to be, it is a good investment overall. But I understand, and the criticism is fair.
Any other comments from the dais? Okay, seeing none, public comments? Okay, let's react to the dais of a motion.
Move, support of fire station number six, apparatus bay replacement.
I'll second it.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this next item involves a proposed change to the immunity code regarding the permit process for charging stations for electric vehicles. And we are prepared to do a brief presentation if you'd like to hear that, otherwise it's up for your consideration.
Do we have a request for a staff report? Okay, I see none. Any comments from the public on this item? All right, seeing none, bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
And Dan, you do clean up very well.
Let's vote.
Any conflict?
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Final item, 18?
This last item, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is the council's appointment to the Visit Newport Beach Executive Committee. And the council has had an appointment to the executive committee probably for about five or six years. It was previously Mr. Dennis O'Neil, who has sadly passed away. So I think you folks are more familiar with your consideration of the candidates for that, but that's just my summary for the public.
Thank you. Now... All right, well, Madam Clerk, we'll distribute ballots. We'll vote on the representative.
The City Council will vote for one, and the person appointed to the Newport Beach Executive Committee needs to receive at least four votes.
Would you please state for the audience, the individuals that are being considered?
The three individuals ranked by the, by the council appointments committee are, one, Doug Wood, two, Amy Olsted, or three, Jim Mosher.
It'd probably be best to open up public comment too before you finish voting.
Okay. Let's take it out to the public. We've heard the three candidates with a staff report on. Any comments on this item? Jim's campaign speech.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Since I put my name in as one of the applicants, I obviously have an interest in this. One thing that bothers me about Visit Newport Beach, I hear it referred to as the marketing arm of the city. I find that disturbing because although Visit Newport Beach does spend public money, they actually are a private corporation, and they don't act very much like a government agency. And I would just have to say that any organization that budgets, as it did in past years, recently it's toned it down. It used to budget $100,000 for an annual party for its 22 directors, or however many they have. And those self-appointed directors determine the salary that should be paid to the manager of it. And although it's a tiny little organization, those directors have chosen to compensate the manager of their small organization essentially the same amount as you've chosen to pay the manager of our entire city. So I think an organization of that kind really needs somebody from representing you and overseeing and trying to monitor what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right, seeing none, let's submit our votes to the clerk.
Councilmember Hurdman votes for Doug Wood. Brad Avery votes for Doug Wood. Councilmember Dixon votes for Doug Wood. Councilmember O'Neil votes for Doug Wood. Councilmember Pieter votes for Jim Mosher. Mayor Protem Duffield votes for Doug Wood. And Mayor Muldoon votes for Doug Wood. So Doug Wood will be appointed to the VNB Executive Committee, and then I will have a new vacancy on the civil service board.
Thank you. We'll deal with that next council meeting, correct? Hey, Madam Clerk, you again.
Now is the time for motions for reconsideration. That's a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions to reconsider? Seeing none, we are adjourned.